I don't know what's going on with that thing, I don't know what's that. Close that. What's up? We're live. Wow, look at that, 682 people here. Welcome to Support a Smile Club, Greta. It is, well, you know the whole planet's waiting for this meeting, right? I'm sure the chat's gonna be going a lot real fast, we'll be able to see stuff, but uh, we're gonna new boot goof. Right here at Hell's Headquarters because uh, well, I'm at, or Hell's Headquarters, we were just talking about Hell's Headquarters at uh, What the Hell's Ranch, but uh, let's go ahead and, What the hell is this going on? Well, the town meeting is going on. I got you guys on the tripod, so if you're new to the channel, thanks for jumping in, be sure to subscribe to the channel because that's, I'm trying to be a YouTuber, So that uh, I can be, you know, a YouTuber. So anyhow, we are um, well, let me see here. You guys can't see nothing right now, can you? We are live right now with 760 people, hold on. And bam, look at that, there's the crew.
I don't want anybody to know that I'm here.
Nope, did we catch him? We caught him.
AI at its best.
See, exactly, AI keeps haunting me. So, so the crew is, look, see, where was Jeremy? Jeremy's not here. I don't see him at all. I tell you what, I do, I am a new fan of butterscotch. I like butters, look, what's, what's he a fan of? All those snacks. As soon as he gets here, you know where he goes to? Right there.
I finally have food again.
Right, right there, he's right there, and he's snacking, look, he has a whole bag in front of him over there. He already ate it, he already ate it. Alright, so I'm gonna walk out here, I know we're gonna be leaving soon, but I don't wanna keep blabbing right there, but yeah, so we're at the schoolhouse right now. We will be heading over to the uh, town hall here in a few, holy cow, 1,000 people. I didn't think we'd get over 1,000, but I guess we did. DJ Raddus lit up, appreciate this, well, Support a Smile. Don't forget, if you're not uh, subscribed to Two Town, and we'll, we'll, we'll explain to you guys a little bit right now, Cause um, we decided to go live a little bit early. Max Lab, what's up? Appreciate it. Take the phone case off, good idea. Good idea. If I hang up on you guys, I'm so sorry. Alright, thanks Max. Hopefully the sound will be better for you. What's up James? And obviously there's a lot of new people in the chat here. It's going super fast. There'll be 10,000 watching, I, I doubt that, but you know, you never know. That would be cool. Hopefully I'll get some more subscribers on my channel. So once again, Max, I appreciate that dude. I meant to do that earlier, but I totally forgot. So if you are a new viewer and you're on here for the Otter Creek Saga, you all know that um, I pretty much, I don't deal with the saga. I just deal with the fun. That's Tube Town, baby. If you're not subscribed, you need to go subscribe. But uh, um, right now, we are gonna go to the town meeting. As everybody knows, I've explained it before, Um, in the chat to everybody, if, if you've seen it before, uh, what's up? I know everybody's saying hello. That uh, I'm not here to do anything in the meeting, I'm here to film for Brett and Madam Mayor, so that they can, I believe they said, hopefully Friday, their video's gonna be coming out. But um, but so when I'm at the meeting, I um, I'll just be filming the meeting, be the camera guy here, I'll kinda keep you still. Be the camera guy. And uh, but before then, like right now, and um, later, and right now, we're gonna new boot goof. So ah, oh, you know what? Shirley with a $10 super chat, thanks to John, welcome man, hey, I got your letter today, I appreciate that. Um, so John Smith there in the chat, he actually auctioned off the very first Willis Time shirt that Julia had. He purchased it and he donated it back, so we're gonna auction it off again. But I tell you, we have some fan mail. And so uh, shady bunch for, it is shady right here. Let me see here. New Castle, what's up? I'm trying to do a little bit of fan mail before all, before we get to the town meeting. Uh, Ruth, what's up? Again, appreciate everybody jumping on, 1,500, alright, maybe 2,000, we'll see. But uh, so uh, this one was to What's You Doing Willis, as everybody knows. What's up? This is my man Kev. Um, we um, We uh, have two different YouTube channels, and it's all basically about me and Tube Town. So therefore, if you are confused, it's okay, cause AI confused. I've confused the robots and they've demonetized me twice, but I was able to talk to them, cause they took us all the way up to YouTube International Division and they went ahead and re-approved us, so. Um, what is up? Uh, use that try to read the chat, but I'm on my phone, it's blazing by right now, I can't see it. What's up Theresa? Ginger Jim, I've never had 1,500 people on my chat, the most we had was today, on Tube Town, it was like 700 and something. So um, that's it. But uh, but yeah, you guys, we'll get to ride me over to the, to the thing there, like Kevin, Kevin just got here. To go into the meeting, and then um, yeah, I guess I should get to it, right? I imagine we'll be leaving soon. See what it says. 2,000 next, that's right. Never worry about AI again from LRG, alright, LRG, where are you at? Alright, um, Um, yeah, so, I'll have to, I'll have to wait, I'll see LRG on that one, and we're gonna do, we're gonna save that one, LRG. Oh, I love it. Hit the like button. 499, great news, Travis, Tube Town, baby, that's right, appreciate that uh, Candace. Then Marcus King, 1999, what's up from Alaska, appreciate ya. 1,700, can we get to 2,000? People are saying we're gonna get to 10,000. I guess I'll turn around and you guys can look at the schoolhouse. Alright, looking well. Debbie Farmer, what's up? We were just talking about you. Um, we were just talking about you. Oh, look, there it is. There they are. They're coming out, they're out. So, 1,742, smash the like. Alright, let's, let's go ask them, we're gonna go ask the gang, what kinda chaos do they think is gonna be going on? Hold on, we spinning around. I'll wait a second. Let me do this. I did get the fan mail, so, alright, there they are. They're getting ready. The, the approach to the town meeting, there's Kevin, what's up Kevin? Jeremy, Jess, Deanna, George, are you ready for the circus?
Never know what's gonna happen in Otter Creek.
That's right. Okay, so are you guys ready to go? I'm gonna jump in my truck, everybody's jumping on their trucks and cars and all that stuff, and um, what's up? And I guess we'll just do the fan mail later. Luckily ain't very far to go. Hold on for this bumpy ride. 1,800, we almost got 2,000. And if you're new to the channel, this is, this is us, this is me, so, um, that's just how it is. We're live right now Kevin. We are live.
I'm looking for the mayor of Tube Town.
Oh, he's looking for the mayor, uh, RTB, $20 super chat, Kevin, the mayor of Tube Town, what, what, what you got? Everybody remember Kevin from the uh, yard sale? Half Mill Town, or yeah, he's a half Mill Town grill as well. He's, oh, he's always here. Cooking, Kevin the cook, yup. What do you got?
This is, it might be a little difficult for us, it's, it's uh, three and up, but we might be able to figure it out.
I think I can do that.
Do not lose the instructions, cause we'll have to call Baby Pepper.
Instructions, you know, they go by on my head.
And then I got you a little.
And we got a new club, sweet. Alright, Kev, appreciate ya.
I'll see you over there.
Alright, we're heading to the meeting, we're gonna put this in the back of the truck. Thank you Kevin. Yeah, Kev cooks here at the uh, ranch, Carl cooked too. One time, but. Turn the AC on, boy, it's hot. Hit the like button. That's right. Alright, we're almost to 2,000. Let's get to it, we can do it. Use that try to read the chat more too, but, yeah, there's, oh, there's a, shut my door. Open. There's the fan mail, there's more of the flags back there, we got for Tube Town. I'm trying to get out the gate before they do, so that somebody else had to close it, not me. Just kidding, I'll close it. 2,019, that's right, on our way to 10,000. Do me a huge favor, everybody, for not subscribing to the channel. You need to, you wanna see a lot of fun in Otter Creek, you need to go subscribe to Tube Town USA and this channel here, which is What's You Doing Willis. So uh, yup, I am doing it live and I am driving. I'm sorry, that's actually happening. Because we're going right over there, right across the street. No cars are coming that way. My seatbelt is not on right now, just so everybody knows, I'm gonna tell everybody right now. Look, everybody count to 10 right now. Count to 10, and we're gonna be turning back into the neighborhood. Actually, probably before we get to 10, but we'll see in a minute. Hope it happens tonight. The popcorn, get the popcorn ready, we are on our way. To it right now, here, I'm gonna let you guys enjoy the ride. There's Brett and Theresa's old campground. Everybody hit that like button, that's right. There we go. Now I'm gonna be one of those YouTubers YouTubeing the meeting. Remember, once it starts, everybody, I'm just gonna be filming. I'm not involved with the meeting, I don't do anything with the meeting. I um, I'm just filming for Brett and Theresa, which they'll have their take on everything, obviously they are longtime residents here, owners of the park that we just passed, that are Now on their adventures out in the back. Uh, I think I know this maybe. These are cool houses right here, these are like old houses in the woods. Look. Oh, sorry. Those are cool. Anyhow, cruising down the road. I waited, I, I always wait to people, but he didn't wait back. Alright, we're coming up to the infamous Otter Creek Town Hall, everybody. I know you're all excited, 2,300 people are watching right now, blows my mind. We're going to blow over right here. Alright. So we are here. We're here. We are gonna go live inside, here in just a little bit, for everybody to see, watch, and witness. But uh, for the most part, I wanna try and get back to a few of these comments right now, before we go inside, I think the meeting starts at 7. Again, you guys are on my tripod, so. And don't forget to subscribe to the channel if you're not subscribed, right? Subscribe. Alright, there, look, now you're like, thank goodness Willis, he was like so shaky, I couldn't stand it. So they're saying, they're saying, they're thinking we're gonna get like um, 7 or 10,000 people. Think we can get that? We got 7,500 more to go. Yeah, I know, the world, the planet's watching, ooh. Watch out. What's up, Joanne from Ocala? Mary Cash, what's up, my four sons, Debbie. Again, we'll talk to some of you all. I'm gonna stay over here for right now, until the meeting starts, that way I don't um, you know, interrupt anybody over there, I'm not trying to Talk to anybody, I'm just trying to be here and bring you guys to the meeting and talk to you guys, cause you're, you guys, you are all the ones that matters. Stay up. Alright, George is here, what's up? T for two. You don't think LP will show up? I see some light vehicles over there. I don't see the, that vehicle. Lock it truck, yup. Speak up Travis, I'm speaking as loud as I can without yelling. Honestly, a lot of people have no problems hearing me. Uh, but some people do, I'm sorry, I don't know what else to do. I'm not gonna get a microphone, cause it breaks, and so. Yup, made it, Adrian made it, what's up? Hope it goes well, Amy, me too. Well, we got 25 people, 100 people in there. There was a super chat, Jax349, what's up, Jax R. I got my sweat rag. I probably should spray some bot on, cause I stink, like sweat. Lake City's in the house, I think I seen it coming earlier. What's up Stats? Again, the chat's going fast, so it's really hard for me to keep up, just so everybody knows. Shirls, Paul C, what up? Linda McCoy. Uh, Madam, Madam Mayor will be right out front. Well, you wanna go out front? Okay, let's, let's go over there. I mean, it's actually shaded over here, so, that's why I was over here. Alright, since you wanna go out front, we're gonna go out front. Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Oh, well, you're not gonna go out front just yet, cause I'm gonna get Deanna water. My God, well, you're kinda short, Deanna, I'm not sure if you can reach up here to the.
You're not lying. You're not lying, I am short.
Alright, Kyle with a super chat there, missed it. What was it? $5, appreciate ya. Alright, I'm trying to hold you guys, you guys are on a big tripod, so therefore um, have fun. Alright, yup, absolutely, who was that? Again, you guys, I don't have this many people, 2,500. Carol Lee, alright. So, we're gonna go right over here in front of the town hall, just like you asked. Alright, how about this thing right here? What about this thing? Hear that music? Is this good enough? Does this satisfy ya? Or do I need to do this? Whoa, whoa, stay up, all you guys are crooked right now. Okay, let's take some bets on how many people are gonna be us live tonight. $10 super chat from, the great mayor of Tube Town, when will be the property available for the people? Uh, well, you'll just have to keep watching. There goes another, again, it's hard for me to, you all, please bear with me. Thanks for filming us live, no problem Jackie, I'm trying to do my best. Luckily, luckily, my awesome moderator, right there, Deanna, was able to help fix it, to get us on subscribers only mode, cause I'm sure you'd have people in there just wanting to blah, blah, blah. 3,000.
Am I the, is JK in there?
Uh, JK, I don't think, I'm not sure. JK, are you in here?
I need a mod in there, cause I don't wanna mod while I'm.
No, you, no, that's all good. Actually, um, trying to set you guys on your feet there, it's not working. Please turn the camera around. Nope, then I can't, I will when you watch the meeting, we'll do this, like that. That's what you'll do. Alright, um, self-appointed, that's right, I am a self-appointed, but like I said in the live day, I wasn't gonna be, um, again, once I go in there, I'm just gonna Just be quiet and film for Brett and Theresa, and I um, that's all I'm doing. Meanwhile, if you aren't subscribed to my channel, you guys need to, if you want a lot of fun. If you want a lot of laughs, that's, that's the idea, change the world one smile at a time. You know, there was another one. Right on Pickle Tink, it looks like a beautiful right there, it is nice. Did Jeremy make it back for the meeting?
Oh, you name it, it's probably happening right now.
Oh, well, I, did you just hear him? So, I'm gonna go over here. This, this is. Hold on, I'm trying to go back and rewind. Uh, Mag in Florida, any, um, appreciate it, thank you, thank you. Again, everybody, um, we're not used to having this many people in the chat, so I'm doing the best I can. As you can see, uh, it looks like we got some town members going in. We are definitely, I'm, I'm like one of those YouTubers out here, standing here, YouTubing. There goes another one. Travis President 2024, that's right, that's right, Bitches Mike. I'm gonna stand in front of the, I'm gonna stand in front of the fire hydrant, cause nobody can park in front of it. You know what I mean? Nobody can park in front of that, therefore I'm good, golden stand here. You know? Thanks, appreciate it. Yup, it's, it's all happening. It is. Uh, well, what's up Digital Storm, Support a Smile, that's right. So quickly, all the new people on the channel, almost 3,000 people, we have two different channels, it's What's You Doing Willis? And Tube Town USA. I've been friends with Jeremy since I met him when he moved here, and uh, we're buddies. I'm actually a paid actor, he pays me to do all this stuff. I'm just kidding, it really, it really doesn't happen that way, that's obviously what people think. But uh, my main goal is just to sit there and make people laugh, smile, have fun. And enjoy their lives, man, cause life is too short to not enjoy. Looks like the mayor just showed up. Look, mayor and mayor in the same picture at the same time. But again, uh, this is serious business here. Uh, as I go inside, like I said, everybody else, I'll just be in there filming for everybody to can watch what's going on. Uh, but meanwhile, we are hanging out front, there's not many people here. We got Jess over there, there's Mayor, Zim, Deanna, nice gentleman right there. Um, so yeah. Again, I can't um, read the chat too much, it's going fast. 3,000, alright, let's keep it going. Don't forget to uh, to subscribe to, look, see? I should've probably worn my What's You Doing Willis shirt, that would've been better, huh? People would actually see my YouTube channel. Oh, you're on it now, you're watching, subscribe. That's right. So, anyhow. Let's walk over here. I haven't been inside, I'm gonna go inside. You guys wanna go inside? I'm a rock star, I'm just having fun. That's all. Let's see. Yeah, so like I said, I'm not gonna be talking in there when I go in there. Uh, I don't wanna interrupt Ms. Belinda and um, see Mr. Doug, it's always good to see them, they're good, good, Good people, and I really enjoy seeing them. I'll talk to them after the meeting probably, but uh, once, like I said, once we go inside, it's just gonna be Me filming, so everybody's just gonna get to watch what's going on. I'm not going to, again, interact, not gonna do anything other than Uh, goof off right now for 3,169 people. That's what we're gonna do right now.
How many?
3,169, and look, this is my security team right here.
Yeah, I'm the short one.
There's, yup, look, she's, look, she's got her Tube Town shirt on.
I do.
Yeah.
Boop Town, baby.
That's right. And they both got their badges, which are Tube Town flags. They both, they both got the uh,
We're hard workers.
Yup, the original one. Were you guys on the Tube Town Live earlier? Well, let's get the, let's get the, let's get the thing in the background. They can't see it.
His, his, his little tripod thing is taller than I am.
I know. What's up, T for two, get a front row seat so we can hear the board. Alright, well, I don't think there's gonna, there's not many people here. Once I go inside, what time is it? Once I go inside, I'm not, I'm just gonna.
It's 6:30.
It starts at 7?
6.
Yeah, so once I go inside, like I said, I'm just gonna be filming, so, um, it's no fun just filming, I like talking to you all.
Right.
Right, see? Jess agrees. What's up Julie, from Minneapolis?
From Minneapolis?
Uh, that's what it said.
I'm a Minnesota girl.
Minnesota? From Minnesota you are, huh?
Longos, Minnesota.
You're from Minnesota, look there.
Minnetonka Beach, representing.
I'll just hear Jess, they're behind the camera. Love you Willis, love you back. Uh, what'd it say? I just go so fast, flipping, again, there goes Mary Dell, appreciate you, Mary Dell. Tell Jessica, what did it say? Tell Jessica, Jamie Bartholomew said, hey.
Hey.
She says, hey, Tor Hild from Norway, ketchup and balloons. Uh, man, $5 from Pickle Tink, appreciate ya. Appreciate ya. Um, but yeah, so we're gonna, we're gonna be doing it. Uh, the chat's like gone, I can't even see it no more. $20, have an ice cream with me. Will do, Kimberly, that I will for sure. No doubt, no doubt about it. Hope you as well.
So fast, it's going so fast.
Again, it's, it's hard, like, I might get one, there's Eddie from, Eddie from Ireland. What's up?
Tell Honey Town we can't slow the chat, we're sorry.
Yeah, I didn't, I could've, I could've did it, I think, but I'm on my phone, so I couldn't do certain things. So um, therefore, luckily, Flippin was here, and she was able to click the subscribers only mode on the um, on her moderator tab thing or whatever. Cause I couldn't do it, when I set, when I set it up, I can't do it. So.
Debbie in here?
Debbie? Arizona's in the house. Alright, 3,300, they, okay, I'm still, 10,000? Hmm, that's, that's a lot. That's, Williston's in the house. It's a great day from Australia.
Is Jackie still in here?
Um, I don't know, I still could, Jess, everybody, so I still got some like nasally stuff, trying to get out. Let's see, everyone, yup, so everyone's, um, I guess, Zim's here, um, who else? The Don guy. The Don guy's here. I don't know who else, I, again, I don't know none of this stuff, I'm just here to film, so. That's, that's what I'm here doing. So, anyway, I don't know who is, who's doing what, or who's doing, um, like, People voting in, voting out, whatever, whatever's going on, like, I, I don't know. I'm just a camera guy. I do know there's a photo going on, that's pretty cool. Yeah. Look at that. Only in Otter Creek. I'm just kidding, that's pretty normal around here. Anywhere up here, actually. Netherlands are in the house. And we got all kinds, worldwide, worldwide, the whole planet's watching, 30, almost 3,500 people. Again, excuse me. Luckily, I won't be talking like I normally do, because um, when I go inside, and you guys can just watch the meeting. Appreciate that, Bitches Mikey, Justin went inside, I'll be going inside here in a few. And Don Love, sorry, haven't been around, I'll, I'll, we'll get, get better, and, yeah, you haven't been around, we actually, me and Julie were talking about you. Several people haven't been around lately, so, uh, hope you're doing well. I'll go inside when Kevin goes inside. Kevin's gonna, Kevin's gonna let me know whenever it's time. Cause meanwhile, like I said, like I told you all from the videos before, I was just gonna hang out with you all, Um, outside until it's time for the meeting to start, and then we're gonna go inside, and then you guys wanna watch it, just check out um, Uh, Brett and Theresa, Madam Mayor's channel, you'll be able to uh, see, see um, what they're saying, doing there. What's going on gentlemen? You guys recognize these guys? Good to see ya. Good to see Carl. Uh, what's up Utah, Davey? Yeah, that's what I saw, so, it was Carl coming in on the four wheeler. That's cool. Very good stuff. Uh, there's Madam Mayor. Alright, yup. So again, like I was saying, uh, Madam Mayor, you might have to do a, well, we did the subscribers only, so hopefully we won't have nobody in there. But um, yeah, I need to say, like I said, everybody, I'm gonna be hanging out front until it's time, and then we'll go inside, and we will um, is it time to go in? Alright, it's time to go in. Be honest, my head of security says it's time to go in, so, are you guys ready to go in? Start saying yes, 30, 3,600 of you. Alright, alright, so, from now on, I'm just gonna be out, I might do a thumbs up in front of the camera or something, but that's what we're gonna do. Alright, you guys ready to see this thing that's going on here? Alright, so.
From south and western.
It's YouTube, man.
This town hall, baby? How could it not be a great day? Carl.
What a blessing.
Yeah.
That first, I tell you, that first month was rough, but very, uh, so, and I'm glad we're back at the point I am.
You're going back to work, though?
Not yet. Uh, July fourth, I'm getting back to work. I'm gonna step out and get my water, and I'll be right back in.
Well, they had to get, get the ball.
Did you miss your egg? I'm just feeding it first. You want to see pot games? I got fifteen or sixteen right now. Wait, I'm holding it.
I think it's right there.
Next to Darlene.
We, we intentionally, we don't have a court without swearing, remember, so we should get it first.
What you're attempting to do here is immoral, so legal. It's criminal. You know it. You completely ignore the charter. And I'm not gonna be a part of this. It's just, what I'm saying?
And leave your phone, because I just saw the screen. You're recording and you're removing a public recording from a public building, which is illegal.
That's where we stand, okay? Well, you say you, you can't control the meeting. Look at this. Happens every time. We haven't had one for five months. It's all on you, so it's, it's criminal what you're doing here. And, uh, I bid you goodnight.
Are you quitting?
Leave your check here.
Yeah. Are you quitting, Jeff? Three bills on. Three will come up here, please. You're gonna raise your right hand for me, please? Okay, you don't need to ask me. Uh, state your name.
Hi, Carl.
You solemnly swear.
Sore and solemnly swear.
Uh, or affirm that I will...
Or affirm that I will...
...uphold and defend the Constitution...
Uphold and defend the Constitution.
...of the United States and the Constitution...
And the United States and the Constitution.
...and the laws of the State of Florida.
And the laws of the State of Florida.
...and the ordinance of the town of Water Creek.
And the ordinance of the town of Water Creek. So we got it.
In front of you, you have a package, um, about interview, um, the floor, yours, no. Well, you will, but just that you didn't have your, okay? And those are the, um...
It's called, it's called just the order? To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We need to prove the minutes from the last two meetings, third meeting and, uh, meeting that was...
In your power, you may want to approve the minutes. You're on approval of this month's agenda.
Oh, sorry.
No worries.
Approved, be adjourned. Does everybody have a chance to be adjourned? You want to approve?
Yes.
Yeah, call for a motion.
Do you need a motion?
I'm ready, I'm ready.
So there's two motions, and we got a...
All in.
Four? A pledge of allegiance?
All in. All in favor?
All in favor.
Ms. Thor, remember, this is the only four months you, you have to speak, okay?
Alright, and, um, we, uh, we got... Do you want to be a role playing before we get to the next one?
It is, so it's up top, but that's my, my third one. Apple pledge.
We, uh, we have to select a mayor for the next year's term.
I have another term, but them, mayor?
You have second, yeah. Motion, I'm just gonna go with that.
Well, it's good. Motion second, it's good. All in.
I agree with the two members. You have a question? I'll, I'll go on. Carl?
Yep, I'm gonna go there.
So you have, you have a motion for Carl?
Motion for Carl.
Okay.
I'm second. I'm second. And it's the names.
All, all in favor, allowing the vote, so that it can be recorded.
And favor.
We business. Approved the minutes. There, we got them now. It's good, we got two, we got two sets of events, we got a vote for, for her or approve. February against. We want to use two separate questions.
It, it doesn't matter once the thing is speeded.
If it doesn't speed, this is still together. Both, both meetings, we're wishing for a set three minutes.
And a motion.
Second.
Second. So, I'm. We business. So, I can sign it for Capital City counts, or, in some cases, counts, we, uh, we'll have to have, we'll use the minutes for.
No, actually, um, whenever we decide, you can, you guys decide, uh, back in our form, so we can take it to the bank.
Not on the same. We're gonna new sign it add, and you can call.
Okay, so, okay, so, then we're gonna send some air and, and maybe, okay, so, okay. So, why don't you just make a motion to that fact, just that I heard a call for a motion to that fact?
Can I make that motion?
I think one year.
Yeah, you need a motion for Carl. You need second?
Second.
Second, you call it your sign.
Okay.
All in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, the forms, if I'm going to pass around, at the end, in the bottom, if you two people just sign it for me, um, that will be sufficient for the events.
I forget what kind of one.
There's one more behind that one, Sam. Wanted to proceed, that's the one, the chapter six.
Sure. Okay, now, so, this is so much more descriptive than the discussion. Because, um, wasn't there something designed for the CCOs?
Yeah, it's, it's right there. Yeah, 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 both of them. But.
Please.
Yeah.
Was there any additional present there?
No, uh, CCOs are, holds our CDs. Capital City holds all of our, uh, all of our accounts, your checking account, on land. Um, so, definitely, um, you will be a signer. Um, when the CDs come due, one of us will go, we just, we start for it. Um, and then, what'll happen is when I take this to Capital City, um, you will need to go and, um, some, they'll have papers assigned, and then when I go, they'll have to go again and renew this, if this is second, and, and, and add.
Yeah.
This just saves us, so we can get this done now, versus another seven, forty days, and have a meeting for, uh, so.
Who gives him? There is, uh, nothing on there about the community center.
Yeah, I guess, um, approving the extra fund for the board going, uh, broadband grant for the community center, that's right before the resolution adopting the state law. Um, yeah, that's how, yeah. Um, because we need that in the minutes that we have, all we're gonna do with the extra money.
Okay, we talked about, I was speaking to Darren, my funds, this community center, we all, listen to him, look to them. Our public hearing already, uh, we both are accepting the process for the community center and the location. The community center is, uh, paid for through broadband funding, so it's, you know, very close to the town. And this has, uh, uh, objectively, supposedly do on Third Street, on the city property on Third Street, so it's on a paid grid. And it's also, you can use it as a activation center for the town. Supposed to be equipped with a kitchen and enough facilities to house and jar keep in town, and we too, we're staying in that place. Obviously, won't be four beds, because I'll give you enough space to do it out of the store. And you have to make a motion to pass this, and you can second. I'm not second. Second.
Okay.
There are two motions in all, all units. That's how the council needs to go.
I'm.
First one together, but, uh, I'm, because here, there's all five of them. That's great. Um, okay, um, then, then we, we go to the other. All right, so, um.
Do you want me to just explain it?
For the water or for the?
Um, uh, each year, the resolution that the council has, is every year, the, um, state does a, um, uh, each county does a resolution to, uh, merge with emergency management, um, people in Bronson. So that, in a, in a catastrophe, they're gonna be our main people that will come out to us with, uh, support, with the, they'll be our, the gates on, basically, instead of everybody trying to get, um, past the FEMA, all of them, they're gonna be at one station, and we're gonna all be sort of tied in together. So, they'll be our one leading person to get us what we need in case of an emergency. But, the state requires that we do a resolution, um, to, to say, yes, we want to be part of this group. Um, so, before you waste the resolution, along with all of your data, to sus, to support the resolution, and what it entitles, as far as the, the help that our people receive, um, and everything else that, you know, that goes along with that part of it. Sam, would you like for me to read the heading of the resolution?
The, the title?
Yes.
This, this is a resolution that we either can rush over and receive, or, um, basically, things, it's changing some stuff in the state. You might understand it's, we really have to double group them, because there's still a very, it's still a lot more.
This is just an, an hurricane. Yeah, if everything comes down to it, and somebody loses their house, you know, bits of blood, or we have, we're gonna pull together as a team to get us the, the support that we need, instead of trying to say, oh, that heat's down, we can come back. Um, resolution twenty-four, T two zero two four, NASH one, for the town council. Um, the resolution approving the adoption of the state law municipal aid agreement relating to inter-jurisdictional municipal assistance in accordance with the emergency management act, charter two fifty-eight, Florida statute. I'm gonna make a motion for that.
Sorry. All in favor? Agreed.
Okay, number two, sign it.
Good deal. Uh, at this time, there is no old business.
Hold on, you got, you got two more items. Reviewing and approve upgrade on the water meter account offer for a very long. And that side of new business, and not insurance.
All right, okay, well. So, water meter software accounting information, it gives us the ability to go online, ability, people pay the bills online, and follow through, maybe this into the, at least in this century.
Um, and the, what it's coming down to is, we have a software program that we use for our water bill, and it's called EB Maxx. Okay, EB Maxx is, it is basically on our desktop, but it is managed through the internet. Okay? This software program is like any other upcoming software program that we're gonna deal away with it in the next eight months. But because we are now trying to go live with our website, we and several people have asked, when are we going to get the option to pay online? Okay? This is going to be an upgrade to our current software. Um, we will be leaving the desktop, basically, the internet, and going to do what's called a cloud base. This cloud base is going to cost us, uh, eight hundred dollars more a year than what we're currently paying. But, there's several benefits to this. Uh, the benefits would be, um, you're about the option to, everybody to go online, pay your bill. In this, you will be able to see your account once you create it through the board. You'll be able to make the payments. You will be able to review your history. Um, now, they told me that we're, they're only gonna import a history up to about a year. But anything else, we're trying to work before I can get everything that's here from two thousand fifteen uploaded, so that you can see it all. Yes, and we're, we're trying to find a way to do this. But still, regardless of, even if it's just a different add-on to your account, you'll be able to see your history, what you're, you know, um, but, there will be other things that, you know, between that software, okay? Um. Where is this order? It says review and approve upgrade on the water meter account. This is only the software, not the water. Right, yeah, just software, um, yeah, just the software. Again, you, in the literature that I gave you, and then there is what we have, which is EB Maxx, and what we're going to get. So, there's a lot more items that we're gonna get. Um, this one is also, um, we can have more programs that we, it means us, um, in the future. Um, like I said, with this being the, everyone can go out and put your credit card information in, pay. They carry the paper, um, the federal and the state online for, uh, supper, um, superior, yeah. So, we will not have to stick up another part of it on our insurance, which is good, because that's less money. So, there, we'll treat this as a third part. Um, you will go online, you'll have all the security you're, they're supposed to have, and then, it'll, it'll close right away. So, um, if you have a question on your bill, and there needs to be an adjustment, we'll see it right away. Okay? Um, so, but, it's, in order to do this, we're gonna need a book on the board now. We're, our first, it won't actually hit until about July, where we'll have to pay the initial thousand dollars to start it. But it's a one-time deal, they'll transfer mo, all of our data from there into the new program, and then from there. At that point, then we'll also be able to take it on the website, because that little button says that you can. You know, so it'll take you to their portal, and you, you'll be able to set up your account that way, too. Okay? Um, so, we can pick it up now, or we can pick it up in about eight months. At some point in time, it is going to come, where we're, we're gonna have no choice. But, this is one of those that, you know, we're giving you a lot of feedback, say, when are you going to offer that part in online? I suggest it.
Well, if we do, if we do it now, we get the credits and the payments.
Yeah, we will, we will get, yeah, we'll get adjusted, um, for what we have already paid, and it's not begin until, uh, March and April, and next year, we'll get it for credit, so we're gonna put down, we'll also come back. Right, so, in the long run, it, it, it'll be a little bit more money, but it's gonna get the same one. You know, but just not now. You know, for what, the, the credit we're gonna get back, and what we're gonna put down, and we'll balance out, so we've got to assume that, that extra money. Yeah. Uh, so, if there is something you are interested in, um, you know, I'll get sent to, um, because I can mirror sign the agreement, so I can get it over just the two blocks.
A motion I hold?
I make motion, you have all the data.
Okay.
All in favor?
All right.
Okay.
Okay, um, and the other thing I asked about the meters, I was, I was thinking of, um, by the grand point, about that process that involved our meters, and, um, and when you don't get the generator on this, this process, the water plant, on my next go around, we're gonna get a generator, and you're gonna bring them all in, you're assuming it applies to use to it, while we're trying to leave it for factory and stuff. These are the things that also will have worked, when there's a leak, if something in your house or your property, if there's a leak, you'll, you'll get this in the works, if there's a leak, it'll simply come back to you. So, you know, probably won't be very easy. Anyway, let's come to the, to the, to the, to the.
Thank you.
Um.
Our last, our last, um, I think, is our insurance.
Uh, we have gotten. They did assess on the town, it was like one point three million, was it?
Uh, one point, yeah, um.
And, um, we, we've been assessed value for so long, two hundred is all of this. Our insurance company is basically going, going out at us, we're gonna do something, can't keep doing it the whole way.
Well, the.
It's been a cost increase as well.
We're going to, we went from three hundred and eight thousand dollars assessed way back to one point one seven five million dollars, we're going to asset to the town of Water Creek now. Our fad season starts in two weeks. Okay? Most insurance, if we don't do something soon, they won't hit us up, I'm having. As your packet shows that our lovely second water plant over here is only assessed at twenty-five thousand dollars. The value is four hundred. Yeah, I'm, I'm ready. No, it won't. So, we, we, I, I got with the insurance. Um, our assets are going back, or, um, the premium is gonna go up to twelve thousand, but it won't hit us until next fiscal year. Okay? So, we're going to see that come October anyway. Now, it's gonna cost us about nineteen hundred dollars to go ahead and now, and add the values that we need to cover, for all of our insurance needs, before fad season hits. But that payment won't hit us until July. We can go ahead and, and increase it down to what it's going to be come the new fiscal year, but the difference is gonna be nineteen hundred dollars. Okay? But, if our fad season hits us, we are covered, and, and that way, it's, you know, regardless whether it's here, the water plants, whatever, we are truly covered on what, on, to cover what we're supposed to.
This town's been very lucky in the years.
I was explaining up on where we're very fortunate that we've been able to avoid anything that's happened, north or south of us. Right.
It's like, it's like it's a blanket, when this, this rotism goes away here.
Yeah. But because of the, I mean, God bless our coastal towns, but.
Yes.
We've been very, very fortunate. But because of this, and this was a, a what I opened, or to say, hey, it would be, I, I, I can't, I'm not going, I can't go forward without your approval, to say, yes, go ahead and increase it, yes, we know it's gonna cost us a little bit more in July, the final payment, but, our assets will be covered. Um, so, that's why I bring it to you guys. Well, I, I will make that, like, not wait.
Sorry.
There are insurance.
There's two, a motion for him, and more, a warrant, personally, and some, girls, second. Just as I, myself, in the office, two minutes. I'm looking at the paper, I might mess up the bill.
Something, yeah, that's, 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 that's. Also, I'm not just talking about sure.
If you can do it, in, in the future, just put a little board, and tell each one, so, I'll keep on checking.
Yes, okay.
Uh, so, at this time, there is no old business per se. Um, we've got the, uh, administration, maintenance, water. We've talked about administration, biggest issue was the insurance, um, we talked about Dylan already, so that's pretty much a, takes care of that. Um, maintenance-wise, we're, we've been, um, up on all the grounds, and everything's kept up.
I have to say, Richard doesn't really get to.
And he marries, Richard marries these water systems so well, he's on them every day, and he's, he does a great job of it, and he's, he's loved them. We do appreciate you, Richard. And therefore, you're. The water filter system, we have, we've gotten started on installation of it. Uh, DDP, we had, it's just everybody's up to date, we haven't had a chance to talk about it in a while. DDP, when they approved it, and said we could go forward with it, they did mandate that we increase the amount over the, that we originally prepared to do. So, the cost factors on the filters were higher than, than initially thought was going to be for the purchase. So, we didn't have the funds for the installation.
What was the difference?
Um, about six grand.
Oh, my house.
Yeah, so, the labor for the installation was right at six, five to six grand. So, I, I made, I worked it out with DDP, that, um, that we, myself, and, uh, and the maintenance guy, under the licensed water guy, we're able to install this ourselves, and we're able to work it on it. Um, we've got some really good contractors on it at this time. Um, we've gotten, uh, moving to go, I had some help issues, it's kind of set me back on, we're going, uh, gotten back in here, showed what we're going to do. And, um, I, I suspect that by the first of the month, we'll have it all assembled. And we, we did save the money to bust for the attrition, becoming the finally, monitoring everything to pick it all up. Um, so that was, that kept us on track and keep on moving forward and putting water filters in. We didn't have, I have to take a step back because of our requirements. So that was the only type of answer I had, is I mean, you can't, I haven't been able to do anything different. So that's what's going on with the water. Um, we talked about a lot of the current thing on the next go around. Um, we are still on the current grant, we are still in the process of environmental state. We s- we should be getting that back here probably in a month or so, and it should fall back to Fox and this kid's government, which is, which we are changing, um, we're changing, uh, engineering management firms this time, uh, which is, it was their choice, wasn't by any reason. And, um, so we are in the process of doing a big one, back to Fox, to get a new firm online, so that when it does come back from the environmental state, we're ready for it. And have some money in line to pick that process. Of course, there'll be some legal and balance, I'd better do, probably have that little moving and go along the new firm, just like we did the old firm. So that is forthcoming. Anyone else think?
No, the, uh, website, um, if you want to go online, you can go ahead and, uh, we are active. I'm in the process of uploading the, um, twenty-three and twenty-four, um, agendas, as well as the minute packets. Um, the children's table gave me, um, their schedule, so I'll be adding that to it, as well as, um, anything else that I can think of. Um, I want to see, uh, if, I'm open for any suggestions on what else you got for us to see on our website. Um, if you want to see the ordinances, resolutions, um, just give me an idea of what we, what we would like to see, so that I can, I know what I can upload.
We probably don't see that work.
Okay.
For those who don't know, what's the address?
It's, the, uh, the web address is, um, countyautocreek.org, and, um, if you want to go on there, like I said, dot, dot org, yes. Um, like I said, it's, most of it's, um, you can go online, uh, within the next weekend, we'll be able to see certain things, as I'm now posting them. Uh, getting the most current, up-to-date stuff, um, seeing any, if you say of anything else, I mean, because this, this website's for you guys. It's for you guys, you know? That, that, that's why we don't have a, a community event calendar, like the other. And so, you know, you just, I'm open for any suggestions, you know, anything that you guys want to see, let me know.
It would even be nice to know, we've got weather, weathering, we have that there that's connected from the EFC.
Yeah.
If we could put that on.
Okay.
Which is, um, is that through the webs?
It's, I, you have to talk to John and Tom.
Aight, I mean, is it part of the, um, the weather app that we see now that you can get? Because now they do have a map for our, for our, for that.
Um.
So if you get the website, another way to do it.
So you guys just, you know, I'm, I'm, I'd love to hear your suggestions.
We were trying to, the one from, from the Harp and Sebastian?
Download this, it's from the EFC, it gives us all our weather reports.
Oh, cool, okay.
So you will get the EFC?
Yeah.
Yeah, um.
Okay, just one call.
I'll make one comment before we end, um, just wanted to welcome the new council members, um, and to say that, I know some of you are new, some of you are not new. Um, but if there's any interest in sunshine laws, ethics, um, probably procedure, any of that stuff, I'm happy you could do a workshop or send a PowerPoint that I have, whatever, I appreciate you guys.
There is an ethics training coming up, it's in Fall.
August, yes, it's gonna be at five thirty in Cross City, or about, are they doing it? Um, I'm not sure, I'll, I'm gonna let you guys know. And then, um, there is going to be a webinar for the sunshine ethics part next month. If you're interested, I'll send you the link where you can register, uh, or you can come in here and we can send it up and we can all watch. You know, because each of us, um, that's something that we still have to do as well. Um, the one we're gonna do, um, Cross City Board is for, you know, taking, and that's a, the different part of the ethics, not so much as the, of the record part of it. So, um, it'll be good for all of us.
Keep giving examples. Um, I propose that we do a special here in town, at the same time that CFT does a road festival, so we can lock some of their traffic out here. Do a, do a street festival here on Third Street, see if, if Sex and Re辟 can close off to do it. And, um, um, proceed to do that for, um, this fall, which is, is in October, we're getting.
Yeah, I think trying to get vendors without, it would be difficult.
You gotta put it out somehow to do that, to reach out and convince the community.
I know a guy who knows people who will show up.
Okay, we're looking, yeah, but obviously, uh, I'm, I'm hoping to set up some PowerPoints in the back of my property here, so we do get food managers that can actually plug in my gift for the food service vendors. Um, obviously, the tent is with the new power, it's a big time thing. We have to decide if it's one day or two day at night. Church, I already spoke to them already, the Bible, you can place that script there. Um, they're okay as long as we're closing out a way for their service Sunday night. This is, I think, five o'clock, I think, which most festivals wrap up on Sunday about twelve, you know, twelve till four.
Is there gonna be a vendor fee?
Um, at this point in time, we're, we're, this is the first conversation we've had. There, there should be something, but it has to be a, if we did do a fee, it would have to be, uh, a refundable fee if, if, if the participation wasn't there.
I understand.
Yeah, that way it makes it fair for all the vendors that live there. Because it's the first time, one, it'll be easy for someone to invest their time in it. So I think, um, a way out of the term profit.
But if you make it free, then people are gonna, maybe from down there up here.
It, um, truthfully, the first year, I'm, I'm all about being free for the vendors, just for the participation and, uh, the activity. Then, then we can actually see and have some experience with it, and we can look at and assess things for the following year. Uh, actually, CFT does it twice a year, we do it every spring.
Especially, you know, art porn and everything.
Yeah, so I mean, heck, well, like, we can do a relevant, um, live, live fall. This is a, this is a historical river line, I mean, it's, um, a lot of history with that. So that's, well, I, I propose that we focus on this and see if we can make it work. I think the free idea, we can get, that advertisement's gonna, that's gonna weigh in with a lot of vendors, and hang with us to the trial, um, on that. I think I'll have four, I assume we'll have four PowerPoints, um, for food vendors. We have, this one, should we look to the property, right? Everybody's, if that will, you're still on.
We can always do that, and that changes what I would want, right?
Yeah, well, uh.
Yeah, I want to tell about the question that's been asked.
Yeah, okay, okay, but we can still do that, see if that works. See if it works. Um, and, and we have started to make it, okay? Good, limit.
Move on.
All right, it was, um, it's been a couple of times, um, we got, um, do you have any comments or work?
I apologize for my outburst in the beginning. Secondary, congratulations, all the new council members. The planet literally cares about this town, and I do too. And by all means, every single one of you, Laura included, Joe, I don't know you yet, Carl, send me half my number. You need anything, just let me know. If you want to promote a festival, I promise you, the planet will show up. They care about this place, and so if there is a need, I'll do anything I can to try and help the town and the residents as well. Just communicate with me, if you would, please.
I'd like to make a comment. Um, yeah, um, I represent outside investment interest, because even before any of this was public, during the hurricane, I came up and I did some relief work and some taxiing for people out here to see their keep, just because I was new to the state, felt it my civic responsibility, because they were suffering. And being in, from Tarpon Springs, I was actually able to get to them, because many people weren't, because this corridor was primarily open. And so during that, I looked at this area and I did some research, and it intrigued me. Then I did some other research, and I found out about the water and some things like that, and other civic troubles that they were having. Then I noticed all of this, just by third party, not even looking for it or anything. And noticed that there was, we're going through some civic change here, right, which is encouraging. Because there's, like I said, not only people from the, that are newly exposed to this, people who have been looking at this area without being exposed to this information. I was, you know, and then unfortunately, I helped, I backed off when I started to discover the, the civic turmoil that was going on here. As far as I made some inquiries about zoning and things like that, you know, if it was possible to get a commercial residential or anything like that. None of those answers were forthcoming at all, so I backed off. You know, but now, I see that there is gonna be some progress, people with progress in mind, you know? I think those opportunities are gonna start to open, you know? I would like to be one of those people, because I got about a decade left of activity in me. You know, before I'm ready to just sit out. You know, I would like to do that somewhere where there's some growth and, and newness and revival. That's my life has always been, in urban rejuvenation and rehabilitation, started when I was living in Sonoma County, we have floods there. Lived through five major floods, completely wiped out, lived through five major hurricanes, completely wiped out. So I know about coming back from disaster. You know, I'd like to, if I can, volunteer any way I can, and also I'm interested in joining this community. You know, as it progresses and as it advances, so that's all I'd like to say, thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, certainly welcome. Um, anybody else? Want to comment? All right, is there somebody else? Is there anyone for you?
Aight.
I'm not there yet.
Here, sir, take you over ten minutes.
Okay, okay, yes, everybody, I know, nobody can hear. Sorry, well, I didn't think it'd be ten thousand, we had five thousand or whatever, but, um, you know, you couldn't hear, I'm sorry. Maybe next time, I do have mics, and next time I'll, uh, put the mic on for the meeting, being as I'm not really involved with the meeting. But I'm not a mayor, I do apologize if it wasn't good enough. I guess you all just have to wait for Jeremy Hells' video to come out, and you'll be able to watch what goes on there. That guy was a little weird, huh? Had a whole mask on his face, he was hiding. He's hiding, he's hiding. Anyway, um, yeah, so, so I'm gonna walk back down here, we'll let everybody come on, come on out. But, um, yeah, I, I tried my best, as you all know, there's always sound issues, maybe it's just phone, it's been dropped so many times, maybe you guys' fault, fell over so many times that, um, that's happened, but we did get five thousand on chat, that was pretty wild. Uh, that was pretty entertaining, so, uh, anyhow, I appreciate everybody jumping on and watching the live. We'll hang tight for a few more minutes, say bye to everybody, and then, uh, I appreciate you, all the support you guys are talking about, um, to, um, you know, do what we can to, to make it better. Like I said, I'm just here to be a cameraman, I'm not here to do anything other than just that. Uh, but next time I'll be a better cameraman, I'll get a mic, huh? That's what I need to do. Excuse me. You're welcome, man, I appreciate it. Uh, yeah, they don't have the sound system in there hooked up, it probably could have been better, if they talked louder, it probably could have been better. If my phone hadn't been dropped so many times, it could have been better, but you know what, you live and learn, right? That's all we can do. So, um, once again, just, uh, you know? Hey, if you were complaining, Mel, boy, you just, just, there was a bunch of complaining about it. Get here, get here, well, can you read, 'cause everybody in chat, I, you think I already know it? You think I know, but what do you want me to do, like, get up and leave the meeting? I couldn't do that, right? I couldn't get up, leave the meeting. Appreciate you, LRG, thank you. Thank you, Deborah, Darlene, appreciate it, uh, good job. Stats, man, where were you, man? I needed to click you on there for a minute, I could have had you jump on with Debbie. Um, I needed to turn stats back in, maybe we'll do that next weekend. I'll get a microphone and, um, we'll, we'll do better. Maybe we'll get six thousand people. Who knows, but if you're watching this after the fact, uh, you didn't see the thing with Dawn at the beginning, guess what? Watch Jeremy's video. All right, I'm not a mayor, I apologize, like I said, um, I didn't know. Uh, but honestly, it was pretty, it wasn't very exciting, to be honest with you, because, um, the only exciting part was at the very beginning, right, Dionne? Look, you gotta, you gotta get down here with Diana. So the only, the only.
I'm on my toes, just tippy toes.
The only exciting part of the meeting was the very beginning. Now that it's kind of a normal town meeting.
I thought it was a great meeting.
Oh, see, I should have.
Like, meetings are supposed to run.
I should have been coming here a long time ago, brought that good mojo, JoJo.
Yeah, I think it was, I think it was the mayor.
It was, it was.
I think the mayor is what made this meeting.
Yeah, so, a pretty normal town meeting, Madam Mayor says hello.
Hi, Madam Mayor, we miss you so much.
Yep, I, I, obviously, Madam Mayor does a lot better at filming than I do, because I don't have the sound.
We'll get used to it. It was a little weird today, but it's all good.
Hey, you know what, I did two lives and a video today.
Be patient and be.
Appreciate you for the mic fun. I have a mic, actually. You know what's funny is I have two mics in my truck, but, um, next time I'll use it for the meeting, all right? But I usually don't use mics because my phone falls over all the time, and the mic will break off and a little jack, and then I'm screwed.
Except for that tiny little first part, this is exactly how meetings should go for a town that wants to grow.
I'm, I got it, I, 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 literally, this, I'm, I'm standing like this in the road with my legs spread open, so that I can be as high as Diana. Um, I do want to say thanks to all the super chats that are in there, thanks to everybody. I know there's a lot of support, I do know that there's, um, I, it's hard to rewind, but there was definitely a lot of support out there.
There was a lot, we appreciate that.
Definitely, definitely appreciate it. And I will have a mic for the next meeting, okay? Um, but I won't use a mic for my normal stuff, because.
All right, I'm gonna go, I'm gonna go secure other places.
Say bye to the head of security, say, say bye to head of security, because now that Diana's out here, I just want to say that, uh, once again, appreciate everybody helping out and, um, and, and do what you gotta do. But if you wanted to see the, um, the, the beginning, that's, that's the only, that's the only, like, woo rah, whatever, you know what I mean? So it wasn't really a lot of con, what, controversy or conflict, turmoil, whatever you call it, you know what I mean? So I guess it's, um, gotta be boring here now, that's probably why we only got that many people in the chat. All right, I'm gonna get out of you all, so, um, yep, check out Madam Mayor, they're gonna be recapping the, uh, my horrible rendition of recording the town meeting. Uh, obviously, Jeremy's gonna have some videos going up on his channel, and, uh, you'll probably be able to hear a lot better on his, uh, device, 'cause my device is not that good. Can you hear me, can you hear me now, can you hear me now? Can you hear me now? All right, so anyway, to all, you know, many thousands of you, I appreciate you. I love you all, if you're new, don't forget to subscribe to What You Doing With Us and the Tube Town, because, uh, I have two channels, and I'm, I'm, I'm so good, I confuse the AI robots, so. Have you found anybody that good yet? Well, you have now. Oh, here comes, well, here comes Deputy Head of Security, it's not the head, Diana's the head of security, but that's Deputy, Deputy Security. What do you think about the normal town meeting?
It was crazy.
It was so normal.
Well, except, except for the temper tantrum at the beginning.
The very beginning, but that's gonna, that, that would be very entertaining. Hopefully, hopefully I got enough audio where, um, Madam Mayor and them could actually, you know, utilize it.
We're hoping that.
Oh, yeah, so, so if, uh, I'm gonna, spoiler, spoiler, Don DeCon stood up and got all belligerent and angry and upset and stormed out the town meeting, right before it started. So that's what happened, that was it, that was all the controversy. Other than that, it was a normal town meeting, you guys just couldn't hear it, that's all. Ain't that right, Kev?
That's right.
Ha, all right, so, um, anyway, I'm gonna say, see you later, everybody. Jess says bye, Kev says bye.
Bye.
We're just gonna say bye to all them over there. All right, we love you guys, we'll see ya. Okay. Well, I never heard, you're.